All right, welcome everybody. This is the Public Safety Committee for the East Hampton City Council. Today is July 11th. We're here in Room B at 6:00 PM. Myself and Owen Zarrett, Councilman Munier, our Clerk as President, Councilor President Gomez is sitting in for Councilor Derby. So we have minutes from the last meeting, but I think they haven't been shared with everyone here, so we can move on to those the next time. Public speak, is there anyone here for the public who wants to speak about items not otherwise on the agenda? I'll give you opportunities to speak on agenda items as we introduce them. I don't see anyone, unless anyone here has anything they want to talk about that's on the agenda. Great, moving forward. So we have DPW quarterly report, I don't want you to sweat, I'm going to come back to that. I just put that in so we could actually have conversations about non-agenda items. There've been a few things that have come up recently, so we're going to circle back to that. So I'm going to really quickly skip over to the, because I think we have a bunch of stakeholders here that this will be relevant to as well, the parking amendments in downtown with updates from Councilor Gomez. And again, I'll ask if anyone from the public wants to make any comments about that, and seeing none, Councilor Gomez, can I turn it over to you?
Yes.
We had some conversations last time.
Thank you. I'm going to try to talk a lot, because we have the expression here, so they can take it from me. Mr. Nuderman, talk about Greg. Mr. Nuderman and I, we took a drive, we drove to all those streets to measure and to be sure that we can change the zoning law for parking. I just wanted to tell the committee that we're not going to do anything with School Street, we're going to keep it the way that it is. So that's out of the proposal.
Okay.
I want to start with that. Then we visited Adams Street and we took a measure of how many parking spots we can do, for 15-minute parking in one area, we decided we can do three instead of two. So I know I proposed two, but then we came up with the idea of having three. On the other side, we measured two and we are pretty sure that we can modify the language of the ordinance so that we allow people to park on the other side. I don't know if Mr. Nuderman and... I would say thank you to City Mayor Beck for helping me, providing the language to change the parking ordinance so that we can do something on those two streets. If you will be okay, I'll ask Mr. Nuderman and Mr. Beck to add to anything what they believe there will be necessary to this discussion.
Absolutely, please. Who wants to go first?
I think what Councilor Gomez is discussing is it makes sense. We'll do what we can to delineate the parking. And, you know, I think if we have the spots painted on that section, it'll help, you know, really show where people need to park and help keep people from blocking driveways. I know there's been some issues with driveways being blocked and just accessing and out of different properties, so. But I think what the proposed changes makes sense. The 200 feet, that's currently no parking on the opposite side. There must have been a reason for that at some point, I don't know what, years ago was there for businesses or what was happening, but I think we could get a spot or two in there, we might as well, the ordinance can be changed, so.
Okay. Mayor Beck?
Yeah, I think it's all good efforts. So I, Councilor Gomez asked me to kind of go through the ordinance section, so there might be some options for how the motion goes, but the first one, there's really three sections that are going to get amended, and it's to create three 15-minute parking spaces on Adams and then one-hour parking zones on Chapel. And then, the way it's just set up right now is like striking out language to remove and then bold, italicized and underlined is new language. So Section 1-24 is where it says parking prohibited in certain streets at all times. So this is where, and then there's a full list, I just pulled out the ones that we're working on, but this list is where you cannot park. So the second item on Adams Street is what Greg just mentioned, the first 200 feet. So I have just a couple maps to help orient us. Oh man, I got a lot of maps actually. But if you recall from the first meeting, this is Adams Street, so you have the westerly side is like the Jim's Package Store side, and then the easterly side is the other side. So this first area in red is that first 200 feet. So the lined out item is to just remove that.
Okay.
As a prohibition. And then, I think Greg had talked about like the first 20 feet of any intersection would get hashed out to prohibit parking there.
That's already pre-existing in our ordinance or traffic regulations?
It's in here, like, yeah, standard for every intersection. So that's that one. And then moving down, if we jump to that same section prohibiting parking is Chapel Street. So it's a little confusing because what we're trying to do is these two, I can only draw one dimension at a time.
Can I ask a question before you skip down there? The second Adams Street intersection, the Adams Street westerly side from Cottage and Maple, can you just explain, is that already pre-existing or are we...
Yeah, so that's the 70 feet, that's also shown here, so that's that first 70 feet that Greg, I think, everyone determined that should stay.
Okay, so that's this one, western side?
Right, yeah, between the distance to the Cottage Street and entrance to the driveway.
Okay.
And the building will be here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that stays on this, what are we doing with that?
That's the strikeout line.
That's the strike, yeah. Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I'm saying where these are. Okay. All right, so anyone else have any questions about Adams Street? Okay, I'm assuming you don't, you said this, but.
For Davey.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have any questions?
No.
And then staying on where it's prohibited, you get to Chapel Street. So because we're changing where you can park, there is this stretch when you're leaving Cottage and you're entering Chapel, it's one lane. And so this is the easterly side, and so it's just traditionally no parking there, so we wanted to just make sure that's clear. So from Cottage to Chapel is 165 feet going in the northerly direction. And then Chapel on the westerly side is this map going from approximately, you know, the Cottage Street intersection, 200 feet gets you past all these driveways and lands you here. So those are showing where it's prohibited on Chapel. That makes sense, right? Because that's just kind of mimicking what's already there. So then, you jump in the ordinance to Section 1-25, which is parking prohibited on certain streets during certain times. And then this A says no person shall park a vehicle except to unload, load or unload upon the following described streets Monday through Friday during the hours specified. So here, the one that we're striking out is the rest of Chapel Street. The way it was set up is like, basically from Maple, 200 feet, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM from September 1st to June 30th, we talked about that last time, so that was the school zone, so we're just striking that out. That's very straightforward.
We'll remove that school sign too, I think that was in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the other conversation we had last time was, there are, there's two crosswalks that don't have handicapped accessibility and they don't really have any purpose anymore, because it used to be like a school bus would drop off kids and go across the crosswalk. So it's like, there's one here, and then there's one mid-block right at the entrance of the school. So those, I don't think it's an ordinance thing, just an acknowledgement that we'd probably let them fade out.
The pink on the road.
Yeah. What I think we talked about last time was, people are kind of ignoring the signs, but they're not parking in that crosswalk and throwing off a load of weight of people parking in that little stretch.
Okay, so people could park there?
Correct.
Yes.
I think it'll shuffle them a little bit.
How are we going to make that, or we're just going to wait for it to fade out, or are we going to do something to, so people pick up on that?
DPW have blacked out. We could black it out, we could paint it black, yeah. It could be done, if that's how everyone wants it done, no problem. Probably fairly fair.
If DPW can do it, yeah.
Okay.
Great. So then, jumping down to Section 1-26 is parking time limited on certain streets. And then it says no person shall park on the streets for a longer period of time than is here in specified. It does say, just for general reference, these restrictions shall apply between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. It's just like built into that. But here is where the 15-minute comes in. So it's Adams Street and it's going on the westerly side, so that's this drawing, so that's the Jim's Package Store side. And what I tried to do, just to make sure we had the ability to retrace our steps, is 140 feet from Cottage Street.
Yep.
And that lands you just past, there's a curb cut for the new building, and then, as Greg was saying, you have like a 12 or 15-foot area marked off, and so that should be about 140 feet.
From Maple Street.
From...
That we're going to ask, too, like, because...
Is that Maple?
Is this Maple?
It's Maple. It's Maple?
What is it?
Okay. So that would be Maple.
I mean, I know this is Maple, but this tiny...
Right, that's a good question.
I think the old plans show that it's Maple.
That makes sense.
Okay. So that would be one amendment to that language, we change that to Maple. And it's three spaces.
Yeah, and then the rationale for the three spaces was, well, let's see what fits basically in front of that store, I'm assuming three spaces, so you'd spaces fit almost to a T probably?
Yep.
And you're still...
Yeah.
And Dave, you weren't here for this, but basically the conversation was that, you know, now with Jim Package Store, new location, kind of loss of a parking lot, they would like to have more dedicated spaces for their customers, you know what I'm talking about now?
Yeah.
So basically, we're just trying to create some dedicated 15-minute spaces so that people aren't parking there and sitting there to go, you know, enjoy Cottage Street or something else down there. By creating 15-minute spots, it's almost guaranteed that people parking there are probably parking there for the purpose of using the store, so it's business friendly. So that's only for, did we read this?
Three spots right near Jim's, are you talking about?
Right in front of it, 15 minutes.
Yeah, the only thing that would run around.
Okay.
I like that. Is there any show of plan that's to send to a city?
Is that like we said last time? I mean, I think we...
My note was, it started out at 10:00 AM to 6:00, then it went, and then it was 6:00 PM was too early, so it was, I think, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So that might need to be written in right after that line. Because it's like a, we talked about how you could put a specific timeframe there.
Yeah. So we said 10 till 8?
Right.
Does the Package Store close at 8:00 every day?
I think...
Does it have a 9 o'clock night?
He does. What he said is after that timeframe, it's just much less busy.
Okay. So then after that timeframe, no parking or any free-for-all?
It would be like you could park there for...
More than 15.
Right.
Overnight, okay, yeah. You could overnight park unless it's a 10:00 PM, you know?
Yeah, but I think, I think he said...
Yeah, but it will be slower than, you know...
Anyone, any...
So we decide 10 to 8?
If that's what, that's what my note said, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what we said at the last meeting, we said 10 to 8, and everybody agreed by it.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense before 10, that's just a question of how late, and I think, yeah, it'd be so.
Are you saying 6 to 8?
Uh, 10 to 8.
10 AM.
10 AM to 8:00.
To 8:00 PM.
Those three spots?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's neat.
I like, on a Friday or Saturday night though, he could lose all his parking with an event going on, say there's something, something going on, right?
After 8:00.
Yeah, I think he acknowledged it was a reasonable trade-off.
It's a compromise from everybody, with all the businesses too.
Yep. He means.
Okay, anything else on that?
And then just to, you know, clean up what the rest of Chapel Street was striking out, that other, because those were 15-minute zones too, so those go. And then, we're still in Section 1-26, and it's C, which is the one-hour parking block. So here, we're going back to Chapel Street and to make this something that people in the future could understand, is for this dimension, we came down from Maple, so it's both sides of Chapel, from Maple Street to a point 245 feet in a southerly direction, and that's what this drawing shows, so on both sides it'll end here, they'll come down this side and this side, and that's where the one-hour zone would be.
Yep.
And that kind of matches up with the other side.
Okay.
And then, cleaning up the rest of Chapel, I couldn't figure out where the last two were really supposed to be. I think they were over in this triangle, but there was an odd number of 67, which I could not map that out, and then a 50-foot, which might have been this little section here, so we already addressed that.
Thanks for bringing this forward and thanks for all the stakeholder help. Any other general comments about that? I think it seems like the language is pretty tightened up. Who will kind of, is it kind of this language as put forward that we present to the Packet and to Barbara for the meeting?
My answer is, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to send it to Barbara if she's, she's, she wants to see it first, but I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, I'm going to fix Cottage Street to Maple Street, and I'm going to add from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I will add to the language, and soon that will be it.
All right, and so I think she, she needs it soon-ish, I think, right, for the paper?
Yeah, it'll be in tomorrow.
Okay. I don't have any issues with that, I don't think we generally have any, I think this is basically...
Do you have any... I'm just curious, why one hour on, I probably wasn't part of the conversation.
Oh, Chapel?
Wasn't part of the conversation, but why one hour on Chapel and not just...
I'm pretty sure it does, it's really similar to what we have in Cottage Street. Cottage Street is one hour or it's 90 minutes?
I don't see Cottage Street listed as one hour.
It's a good question, I mean, the only other area is Campus Lane.
Because if we're going to do, we should do something similar to what we have in Cottage Street, like if it is one hour, one hour, if it is 90 minutes, 90 minutes. But I think it's just one hour in Cottage Street, and I can take a look before.
All of the spots are one hour? Or are some of them one hour?
Well, then like, Union Street might be, Union Street...
Union Street is a potentially friend one.
A future project?
Yeah.
I guess the question, I mean, Director, are you basically saying, why is it just park there, and why is it one hour at all, like why can't you just park there and leave it type of thing? Like if you're going to hang out on Cottage Street?
You're saying you want to enter, you're going to be there for more than an hour, more than 90 minutes.
Which I think, I think in practice most people do.
Yep.
Thoughts from the councilors?
Well, I mean, I'm showing you, you know, I don't know whatever it came of it, maybe I wasn't paying attention, but people are asking me about the Maple School, is there still going to be a parking lot or no? What do they do with that?
I think that that's part of the proposal.
I lost track of that completely.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, what City Council talked about was, at a minimum, trying to get 15 public parking spaces on this side here.
Yep.
As part of the redevelopment of the school. So the whole thing, the back of Maple would be parking for the tenants who are going to live there, and then the proposal would have at least 15 parking spaces that come kind of right in this area we were just talking about.
I guess a lot of people are asking me if the school's being torn down, a big parking lot being put there, that's going to happen?
No.
No.
Okay. See, that's how far out of the loop I was on this.
When you're back into the loop. So also, if I'm reading this correctly too, Chapel Street already, this already was a one-hour parking zone, correct? This is, we're just, right, it already was one-hour parking.
It's like, I mean, whatever wasn't in that 15-minute zone would have been one hour if you were outside of that timeframe.
Yeah, it is all in there.
One hour?
One hour, correct?
Is there a two-hour?
Cottage, Cottage is one hour?
Yes. Well, I mean, I think most of it, it says Cottage Street entire length from Union Street to Clark.
Okay.
Cottage Street northerly side from the westerly boundary of Chapel Street, a distance of 565 feet in a westerly direction.
It should be two hours.
Cottage Street northerly side from a point 350 feet easterly from the intersection of Union and Cottage Streets in a distance of 120 feet in the easterly direction. Hope you guys got all that.
Yeah, like, what, I guess the problem, because I only, I only...
What do you want to do with this?
So why, I don't know, I'm going to give you something that may...
Two-hour parking means it's just Union, Union Street easterly side.
I think Cottage should be 90 minutes, but that probably we can do two hours, like if someone's going to have a dinner, they can go there, relax, you know, have a dinner. Two hours will be plenty to get something and get out.
On Cottage? Or Chapel?
Chapel?
Okay. So should we create Section, 1-26, Section D for two hours?
Section D there.
It's like, if it does exist, there's only one street listed. Every other street in town that's regulated is one hour.
Except for Union Street easterly side.
I don't think it forces it though.
I would agree two hours.
Yeah, what do you think about, what do you think about just shifting that whole line without Chapel to two-hour parking?
It's not a bad idea, because what if you got to go to like Amy's place and there's a wait for a table?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
And that's why they said two hours.
Yeah, or, yeah, what do you think?
I like two hours, because of the same reasons.
Yeah, all right, well, then, why don't, I'll just take a call to the motion then to move that to Section D, that line starting at Chapel Street from both sides, move that to Section D, just to have a motion for that.
So move.
A motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so there's...
Make sure you're recording that. So she puts the longer parking further, what, she parks a walk and it's a benefit to park Chapel there?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and that creates a lot more flow in Cottage, which I think that makes sense, it's a good compromise. Is that kind of what you were getting at too with, yeah, okay.
Can I just say, I think, we came up during the discussion of the schools, I mean, I think this is an important step, because right now it's unclear what's happening on Chapel Street, so it's great. And I do think in the future, we should probably go through and revisit this and look at the other streets, because if we did start to enforce one hour, I think we would have a couple areas that are, it's not compatible with what is happening right now, so, if you get, if there's other questions at City Council, maybe we can say that we, because I think I made a statement that we don't, we're not doing anything for parking management. You know, we have a couple A-frame signs that I literally put out occasionally, they're out there, and a banner. Other than that, we don't have a map, we don't have any other signage, we don't have any other wayfinding, so that would be part of that next step that we should take to just appoint people to where all the parking is.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would behoove, yeah, exactly, I think it would behoove us from, I mean, Main, Union, Cottage and connecting streets to really go through the entirety of the language, and, I mean, we can't really get into the wayfinding too much right now, I don't know if that project's still happening, but do like a really exhaustive, you know, probably once we know more about the schools and then really look at the, like more of a parking plan.
And there are small grants for that kind of stuff, that's like, it's like a downtown initiative type thing, so you can get a consultant on board to do all this inventory, create some maps and really go through it, so that would be a logical next step.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be open to, I mean, it's July now, I don't know if I'll be here next term, or if I'll be chairing this committee, but certainly if either are in place, then I'd be happy to entertain that, so, yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, it's, especially once Union's done, we got to kind of digest all this stuff, so that's another side. All right, anything else other than that?
Yep, to change that two hours.
Any more comments on that piece?
Can we see that? Just to be clear, the motion is to move, I'm sure it's Street both sides to Section D?
Chapel, yeah, this line about Chapel Street, both sides of Section D, yeah, to make it, yeah, to make it two hours.
Perfect, all right, make sure you got everything.
Okay, are we, are we good? Does anyone have any other comments or concerns? All right, can we move on? So unfortunately, Councilor Derby is not feeling well.
Just one second.
Oh, yes.
He said for the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, let's take a, yeah.
We have a public hearing August 2nd.
Yeah, we have a public hearing August 2nd, and actually, I think to your point too, I'll take a, I'd like to just take a motion to accept all these recommendations too for the council, so I'll take a motion now.
So, second.
So a motion from Councilor Munier and a second from Councilor Gomez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's three, nothing to recommend to the full council, these no parking amendments, and that will be on August 2nd, 6:15 PM. Anything else? All right, so again, we have a number of department stakeholders here. Councilor Derby had brought forward the request to review traffic mitigation at the intersection of Cottage, Chapel, Clark, Holyoke Street, and we, as people know, we suspended the rule because it is an important thing to talk about, we did have a specific proposal, I think we discussed a little bit last time, we kind of threw out some ideas, and then we decided to move forward inviting some DPW engineer planning here to talk about more, before I open it up to the department heads, to any other comments about it right now. So who wants to go first about this intersection and some ideas or more interesting?
Why would we go at the same time?
I can't, I mean, there's a few things to consider here, is that, you know, we did just make some significant upgrades there, wouldn't do that again, 2018, about five years, so. There is a, you know, people do come down Holyoke Street fairly fast and come around that corner. But any change we make there, we need to look at what that change does to the surrounding streets. And that takes a traffic counts, speed study, and we need to consider the turning movements that are going to happen there. And that takes a consultant and funding to look at that. So it's not something that DPW could fund from our O and M budget. So I guess, like, long story short, we need the mayor to be bought in to make some investment there and taking a good thorough look at what, you know, say it's a small roundabout, small roundabout or one-way on Stone Path or whatever, the, you know, of course, back, you know, whatever the concept would be, to look at, you know, really making a big change there. There, it will take money to do that, you know, and then funding to make, you know, of course, if we go after grant funding of some kind and try to offset the cost of it, but it all ends up coming down to what we can fund. And like, one of the things we focus on is just doing what we can with what we have every year. I don't have money to fund that on our O and M budget.
Of course.
That being said, some small changes might be feasible. Dan and I discussed a couple things, possibly a raised crosswalk across Holyoke Street from, it's hard to say, Holyoke to Stone Path and Stone Path to outside. But everything takes some, some time to get out there and really look at what the right of way is and where we can put things.
And that was the other thing, that we talked, the survey would be important along the way to determine what's what out there, so adding that to the consultant.
But a raised crosswalk at this location, I think, would do a lot to slow traffic down coming around that corner, which, you know, one of, I think, one of the things to focus on doing is like, maybe the intersection alignment, the way it sits now is okay, and it's not so much the alignment of the intersection as it is getting people to realize that they're coming into our business district, they need to slow down, pay attention to what they're doing.
Yep, yep.
So.
Do those lights that just flash all the time, basically, as you're, as you're entering any sort of an area, like, you know, they say, people say slow or other warnings, do those do anything at all, or are they just...
Science, I mean, science helped, but nothing like a physical slowdown or restriction of the flow of traffic there.
The two, I think the two yellows help.
Well, and the RFDs we put in in 2018, I mean, that was, you know, a great improvement that Dan helped steer through.
That was complete streets, that's the only thing I was going to say.
That's, that's...
Yeah, those two, those two were complete streets, so that's something we've applied for on Holyoke Street, but there could be an extra request to do something, because it's a pretty critical intersection, critical spot that we can improve. So that's something we've applied for on Holyoke Street, but that could be an extra quest to do something because it's a pretty critical intersection, critical spot that we can we can improve.
And then, I mean, does it, does in front of the crosswalk in front of Nene's, does raising that do anything?
I mean, sure, it would slow people down. I mean, it's gonna slow people down.
Right.
But I think getting them to slow down before that corner, coming around that corner, if you're going fast.
Yeah.
I mean, I, somebody could be in that intersection, that crosswalk. The one at Nene's could be an issue.
Well, that's what I was asking before we had forum was, is there any prudence to when someone activates this light, this crosswalk light here? Can you, can you have another light farther up that says, when flashing pedestrians in crosswalk? Does that, will that help? Can you do that and does it, will it do anything?
Probably could, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I've not heard of, you know.
Comes back to money.
Yep.
You know, and I think if we were gonna throw twenty five thousand dollars, but just for sake of conversation, a raised crosswalk would do more.
Yep.
Than additional, because a raised crosswalk would have its own R F B. Be raised crosswalk ahead. And I mean, how many times are you gonna drive down Holyoke Street onto Cottage before you learn that that's there and you're gonna slow down?
And yeah, and just to be clear too, like my question about this one, it would be in addition to not in in.
We wouldn't be taking anything out of it. Anything we did would be, the thing about a raised crosswalk there is it does, it doesn't affect the flow of traffic. It doesn't affect the movements. So.
Yeah. Any comments with the counselors? And is it a fair statement that because your, how far down does the current project on Holyoke Street go?
It stopped, you can almost see it on that, like, pretty much right here.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, that was my only question.
It's not something we can just add to the new, we talked about that.
Yeah.
It's not something we can just add to it.
Yeah, and do you need a study to make that determination or is that something you could just put in?
Probably just, if anything, I would say survey. We need to look at the ramps, the refugers on each side and what. And the drainage, yeah, that's an important part of drainage.
So my only, my only more global input, because I don't disagree, I don't disagree with the the the. The sponsor of this question, I think you were involved with that too. Is there's gonna be a lot more going on Chapel Street once Maple School gets done? If we're gonna spend money or or go after grant money for a study? I'm not talking about like more like stopgap appropriation, like little things. Should we wait to do that? Instead of doing a study, doing some upgrades and then having having the Maple project go in and having to do that again? The only thing about, if I, if it's okay, I think the only thing about the Maple Street stuff, the school, sorry, I am like attached to like not Maple Street, it's Chapel Street. The Chapel Street improvements that would get tied to the school project. We have, we have funding still available from Mass Development to finish those plans. But they, they drew the line here because. Okay. The geo, like, right, so I think you've said this before, like, the the geometry of this whole intersection is not easily solved. And so the Maple Street school project would potentially, it'd be like Mass Works, for example, would come in to behind the school and help fund the creation of that public parking, fix the sidewalks in front of Maple Street, the crosswalk at Maple Street, and then coming down the other side. That was kind of, because there's water sewer improvements on the other side. That that would be the goal is for Mass Works to fund the water sewer improvements and then top top the whole sidewalk system, leaving this as like a separate. Oh, I understand that. But what I'm getting at is that the 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 traffic patterns and traffic flow in and out of Chapel Street and and, you know, onto Cottage and then we're onto Maple in the other direction is gonna change in ways that we can't predict until that project's done in regard to a study now versus doing more things like using, you know, doing some surveys and doing, that's that's why, that's a statement or also a question.
I don't off the top of my head, how many units are in Maple?
Forty, about forty. If you don't think it will make a difference.
I don't think it'd make more difference than the school did. That makes sense, you know what I mean?
Or if they do, if you did do a study here, they would be well advised to incorporate the fact that there'd be forty units at the school.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so we have a, we have a question, a raised crosswalk, uh, whether R F Bs, right? Yeah, I want to say R F B. Are there other less expensive options to, that don't require a large study that we could look at? Is that what you think would make them be the most bang for the buck and makes the most sense? Yeah, we know it's.
We could do a safety, just feel like we did on some of the elements, just put the two, two signs up and paint a crosswalk there. That could be something that would at least define, it would mark, give a marker his, you know, you're entering into that span area before you hit the curve.
Yeah, I think we need to look at how expensive it will be, what the drainage, because if there's a major drainage issue, that's.
I mean, just paint it, just if you just painted it.
We can look at how much it's gonna be to do a race one and then go from, you know.
It is a long crosswalk.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Okay, any input from the counselors? So I guess next steps would be kind of then putting ourselves in a holding pattern until you have more information, we can talk about at a future meeting. So is that a reasonable statement? Okay. Do you think it'd be worth, sorry to interject, but, you know, there are, you had some concepts of, because I think you'll get it if if in public discussion as well. Is that the best we can do? Is it the only option? But there, you know, there are like Stone Path is sort of like Dan's drawing here shows like dead end next to Stone Path. And what that would do, I think, great to end, I mean, I'm not speaking, trying to speak for you, but.
Narrow that all, narrow that all up and the commentary down, because now it's a big wide area to come through.
Yeah, people would be flying down there, they'd have to go and wait for that left.
You recognize you're hitting the same kind of down as you get here, you can, you can build that in that intersection. You could even put a parker there if you wanted to.
But the thing with doing that, we have to look at how, yeah, how much traffic that puts on Cherry Street and getting fire apparatus into that neighborhood. Because I know that, I think there was some discussion of Stone Path being made one way years ago and there was some serious concern about getting fire trucks in there.
Well, the other one was you could, you could do a little circle.
Oh, I see, so if if that, if the, that little thing would be, then that could be, and you could make this one way.
You could, yeah.
Like, you could only get out or in one way here, then to get that the other way, you'd have to go farther up Cherry or whatever. I think something that, you know, I think Greg and I, maybe probably Dan have heard me from the mayor especially, you know, currently is trying to establish priorities. We can't do it all. Yep. And so I think, you know, we have other intersections that we've all discussed. Yeah. That may or may not be a higher priority, but they're on the list as well. So like that kind of gives merit to the idea of a potential race crossing. Because in theory, that could get done and not steal a million dollars from another intersection that is a different priority. Well, it doesn't exclude something like this somewhere in your town.
No, but that is, that has, you need, we need a big, very thorough look.
Yeah, I agree.
Before, because we could just fix one problem and cause another one.
Okay, so again, either way, then maybe, so maybe come back with a few different scenarios and potential costs and stuff and we can talk about it again or?
As you can add here.
I mean, at the end of the day, if you want to do it, you just do it and make the request, but it's just a sort of like the public, it's good to like have.
I mean, we get, we'll, we'll take a look at how, what it would take to get a raised crosswalk in at that location. I think that would make a very big difference at probably a maximum cost of seventy five or eighty million.
Yeah.
Raised crosswalk in R F Bs probably would come in somewhere in that price range.
Yeah, it would cue people to slow down and, yeah.
It's not that I don't want to do more there.
Oh, I, that's, well, yes, I hundred percent get that again, yeah. I mean, the priorities and you just did stuff and if you start to want to do more, you have to get into studies. So most, what's the most bang for the buck, not going to keep you safe, so, yeah. One more thing to, because Dan and Greg were not at the last meeting, but, and Dan, this is gonna shoot to you, but. There's a federal program called Safe Roads for All, right? And are we gonna be, are we trying to participate in that?
State Streets for All, basically, Pine Valley Planning is gonna do a kind of region wide application for a grant. And it's gonna basically, I don't know if you remember Complete Streets, but Complete Streets does a list. So we're gonna take that list and it's gonna be upgraded to meet the standards to be able to apply for the federal one. So that'll be coming this, this, they're gonna apply in July and hopefully we'll leave this fall. And then we'll have somebody come through town and the consultant will put it on our list. And this will certainly be, we'll make sure that all our intersections, all any places that we have in mind are on our list so that we can then apply for projects.
And then my understanding that that the list was necessary and then, if I understood it correctly, then we are supposed to then prioritize the the intersections that would save potentially the most lives in the long run.
Geared towards safety, definitely geared towards safety, we're out in, so like Springfield, they're ahead of the game. And they, I think they're doing ten intersections and they're actually, you know, doing all those because of the the funding amount's pretty large that you can apply for.
So that brings things like Main and South back.
Yeah, Main and South, you could actually pick two or three and hit them off.
All right, all right, any counselors, any other, any other comments on on this? Okay, and then.
One thing, the only thing to remember is a raised crosswalk from Holyoke, and I'd say what we're Stone Paths, we would call it, doesn't do anything for traffic coming off of Clark Street. So. It's got to be the right direction.
Yeah.
For a limit, for a limited amount of funding, but.
Well, that goes back to at some point, again, is is there any prudence in putting a raised crosswalk in front of Nene's?
Sure.
I mean, everything else is already, you already have electricity there, you just.
It was just a matter of.
Yeah, and I don't know, so, I mean, that's why, yeah, something downstream. Because my understanding with speed, with speed bumps or speed tables is that it's, one helps, but when you have them also spaced out, that's how you you generally control overall speed too. So I'll, again, I don't know if, but. So.
You know, the raised crosswalk idea, your Nene's would assume that people speeding down, right? Where funnels into all those parked cars, giving crap about their suspension, but they don't care about their mirrors. Why would they care about their suspension?
Yeah, I don't know.
Take off mirrors every day there.
Well, think about options, that's definitely the main one and come back. And when you have some idea, something more on this cost and stuff, yeah, so. I think that's about that, I know it passed a few times, just want to make sure we're not missing any thoughts. All right, so I guess I'm kind of on that same note, like I said, we had in the the DPW quarterly report, mostly so we can discuss DPW related issues. So Parsons and Ferry has been more of a prominent conversation recently. I spoke with Mr. Murphy briefly before the meeting and I think he made a really good point is that we're all aware that there, that we kind of have a oh something moment when we're turning, especially off of Parsons on to Ferry, particularly the left or the right, because of the people coming up towards East Street. It's very hard to see around that corner particularly. And so there's certainly a perceived danger there. And and I think there's a high risk there because of the visibility, but the question is how many accidents have there been there? And so I think that's important, but I also want to be able to respond, we want to, we want to be able to respond to the public appropriately in terms of like, you know, what's the long term plan? I know it's, you know, there's a retaining wall, or is there anything that could be done there? You know, in the near future, I know that people have thrown out a three way stop. And I think that, you know, one of my colleagues, you know, did some digging already, that would probably be a nightmare in terms of backup in all directions. But are there any options there now that would be helpful? And then also, what's the long term plan? And then before I turn it over to you, any comments, any follow up comments? Okay, who wants to take that?
I'll just put out a data point, the only I've done so far in the crash, because the question came up in my head, was that there's been eleven, eleven incidents there since two thousand and five to twenty twenty two. I haven't looked, I haven't pulled numbers and can, so I can compare it to different intersections to see where it rates, but just so that data points out there, eleven, this been eleven.
Okay.
And I don't think there's gonna be fatalities or anything, see any serious interest. But confirm that by pulling the crash data.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, any other, because there's a long term plan, which will take a lot of money to completely redesign an intersection. Yeah, oh, yes.
Even when I agree that the intersection didn't create that many accidents that many years, right? But we, we as residents, we recognize that taking, turning left and noticing cars is is the reality, right? And I know that I want to minimize that, but I just want to put that on the table, that it's true, right? We all probably drive from one point there, returning left there is is a little problematic.
Yes.
And eventually, I hope we have a solution for for that intersection. And I know Main and South Three, that really, by the data, they really have a bunch of accidents. But it's another intersection that definitely we have to take a look and.
Well, we have, we've taken a hard look at it with the H B and we, kind of like, long story short, there's a few different ways we can realign things. But none of the three that we can, that we can do, given the current layout and the retaining wall where it is now, provide enough line of sight for the speed limit and the traffic counts on Ferry Street. So, long story short, is the retaining wall has to be made taller and moved back, which gets exponentially expensive. So the project goes from something we could maybe do for, I don't know, four or five hundred thousand dollars to a couple, like a couple million. So then we look at as development continues on the other side of Ferry Street, trying to tie that to a, so where Jeff comes in, we try to tie that to like a Mass Works, some type of grant program. That kind of fixes up the whole thing and maybe does some stuff on every place too, just to get it all done at once. It's a great, you know, great thing we try to do all the time is stack projects together so that we can, you know, leverage the funding the best, best way possible.
Just to add something else, like, I'm pretty sure this, the tomorrow, the traffic there probably is gonna be insane because.
Yeah, overnight, tonight and tomorrow, yeah, with the river, yeah.
With the what?
Uh, Route five.
Route five is gonna be closed.
Oh, because of that river?
Yeah, so the traffic's getting.
So the traffic is going running through.
Right, yeah. But I just want to echo what Greg said, I mean, I think it is a challenge that we have, in theory, we have a little bit more time until especially that Ferry Street development is built out. And I think that is when we should really be targeting is when that is fully developed. And and the developer has actually submitted an application, which you guys will see soon, to increase the number of units from like one fifty to two twenty five in that total complex. And again, you know, similar to other projects that we're discussing citywide, I mean, that's still a few years away. But that's kind of the projected opportunity is when that is fully developed or if that project needs additional, which it does constantly need additional money to try to match it with the Mass Works, because that's gonna be the best way to get access to like a million or more dollars. The one thing, I I have to leave in a minute, but the one thing I thought would be helpful maybe for Greg to dispel is like a short term, which we, I think you've heard this before about mirrors. And I think it's a common misconception about what a mirror can do at an intersection.
Absolutely, yeah, convicts' mirrors are not approved traffic control device in any T C D. They can get knocked out of alignment, people's perceptions from them are different. They don't work in in weather. And they're not something we're ever gonna use on a street, on a city street to control traffic in these towns. Yeah, it's just.
So just for the record, if we see any mirror in our city, was it installed by?
Not installed by the DPW or is it maintained by the DPW?
Okay.
But someone could install one on their own? That question was raised to me, to be honest.
Here and there at the end of a driveway maybe or something, if someone thinks it's helping them, but that was not installed either with our permission or at our direction or anything.
Okay, I was gonna ask about that.
Well, then the question, yeah, well, then this liability rests on the person who installed the mirror, if there's.
Absolutely, it's not ours, we didn't put it in.
Exactly, that releases a city liability, but then somebody would have to do it at night so no one sees them so that they're not liable. What do you, bigger friend, if there's an accident, oh, Joe Schroitz, don't get it laughed, you know?
Yeah. I mean, the other quick, you know, the thing that I like, I've heard from people too about that intersection is the idea of taking the, there's a chain link fence on top of there. And the idea of moving that back, but it's been unclear from the survey, like, where is the city owned and whether the city is is really gonna go? Because we we don't have to negotiate with landowners, pay for the fence to be relocated, and then the effectiveness of that change, we're not sure.
Where it starts to get very expensive just to figure out what to do. We have to get borings to determine how, what the footing for the wall needs to be. And then how tall the wall has to get, to make the wall that tall, how much land do we have to take? And it just, it turns into a very expensive project to design, to design.
Do you know what is the speed limit there?
It's thirty five or thirty, I think, you know, because that was the other thing we talked about with that conversation down the other mills is that. is that there's no speed limit signs, there's, there's, you go down Ferry Street and then there's, the only speed limit signs, there's basically two, almost direct in the middle, at least that I saw. You know, there's none coming off the rotary, and then there's none further down, but I think the bigger concern is kind of, is Parsons, the Parsons Street rotary area in general. So there's like that dingle or something like that, I think that's what, there's a speed sign there, there might be two, oddly like, almost right next to each other, then there's nothing else. And so
We could look at, if speed limit signs are easy enough to get in on
Yeah.
Maybe it's an option.
Actually, there's one coming, I don't know if there's a speed limit sign though, because there's a, there's a flasher now, the police put a, the police
All of them, they're portable ones.
But that might be mounted on a pedestrian cross sign with a temporary, I think.
I mean, maybe a short-term thing to slow people down on Ferry Street is raising the crosswalk that's there right now. And some RFPs, maybe we put that together with Hoyoke and get out one project. I mean, it's top companies again, you know? That would get people to learn, they gotta slow down at the top of that hill, we have a raised crosswalk closer to the new, to Three Ferry Street at this, right now, so.
Mm-hmm. So where would that, where would that be?
I don't know.
Yeah, so
I think there is a crosswalk there now, right? From Parsons across.
At the top of the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're trying on Ferry Street, we're eventually
So that solves the people heading towards the rotary.
Both ways, really.
Yeah.
It'd be raised all the way across the street with an RFP, and if we, you know, if it's feasible there.
Which side is it on? Is it, is it, if you're coming from east, is it after you pass Parsons? Or is it before that crosswalk you're talking about?
It's like, right, if you're pulling part off of Parsons, taking a left onto Ferry.
Yeah. Oh, perfect. Well, that would potentially
There you should take a left, yeah.
It's an idea.
Yeah. There's nothing you could do about the visibility right now, it sounds like.
No, not with, not with four or five million dollars.
Yeah, they are, here's Parsons, this is for the people that are coming up, they will see the, have to do, have to go slow because
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be a little tricky, but yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Can you paint those things in front of, can you do a few of those hashes in front of it so people know to start slowing down before you even hit that?
Oh, it would be when we put it, yeah, but it would put a physical thing to slow down, you know?
But like, I mean, like, you know, like on Florence Road, in Florence, how there's speed bumps, but before them, there's the lines?
Yeah, it's the Chevron, so, yeah.
Yeah. Because, because, yeah, so that would, yeah, I mean, and that's another
Slow people down.
Mm-hmm.
Really slow the traffic down coming up Ferry, coming at you if you're trying to take a left off of Parsons.
Yeah. I mean, it's better than nothing. And I'm not saying it's not, it's definitely
It's like, we can't with what we have, you know?
Hundred percent. No, yeah, 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 I don't need to, I don't wanna make it sound like, I think that's a great solution where there, it sounds like they're wired a lot right now, unless we have two million dollars.
Wow, yeah.
The one, the one potential benefit of talking about that, and especially in the short term, is we are, we're waiting to hear on a community development block grant, which was the biggest one we've ever asked for in terms of for design, and that was gonna be the redesign of the surface streets in all of New City. And we had, we had pegged Parsons down to that area, and then the crosswalks going across Parsons would be designed.